The June 17, 2024 Auburn City Council workshop will be called to order. The first item of business is an executive session pursuant to Title I MRSA Section 405-6C for discussion of an economic development matter. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Council Gary and seconded by Council Walker. Vote will be by show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? In favor? The vote being unanimous, the council will move to executive session.
Two and a half hours is long.
One quarter.
Two people ahead.
The city council, the back in work session. The next item is capital infrastructure projects update. The city manager will provide that information during his report in the regular council session. The last remaining workshop item is the upper reallocation discussion to follow from the last meeting, the residual balance that the council needs to consider is $589,302.83. And in following up from the prior discussions, there have been three potential projects brought forward. The first one is $40,000 for the food insecurity and the council will recall that it was either the last meeting or the meeting before when we when we reallocated CBDG money, $35,000 was carried forward for food insecurity. And this is the balance for the continuation of basically three activities. There's the Grab and Go food program. There's the provision of food services at the PAL Center. And there's the potato initiative. The second item that was brought forward is an additional $40,000 for Lake Grove Park to build on some success that we had there with the prior construction. And the third item is $70,000 requested by the housing committee for consultant services to assist them with their assessment and report. Mr. Manager, do you want to add to that?
No, thank you, Mayor. That's a great summary. I think that maybe I'll take them backwards at this point. So the looking at the housing survey, that would align very well with some of the initiatives that we're working on as it pertains to the new tech zone that we passed in previous meetings, as well as some collaboration that's being done with the state of Maine. The state of Maine is working through studies as well as far as how do we enhance housing in our workforce areas that would really align well with that region of Auburn, which is our South Auburn region. And so aligning with with this organization to conduct that survey, we did take a look at a survey that was done similar similar to this in the city of Bangor. And as I mentioned, the state of Maine is working through that initiative as well. The Lake Grove Park, as the mayor said, has been very successful. If you haven't been down to Lake Grove Park to take a look at the use at that park, this is really becoming that that gem that I believe the outlet, Lake Grove Park, had been in the past. And the amount of families that are there using this is just growing. And that way, Council Walker, we talked about the things that we had not completed in the initial round. There were funding that was left over. So now it's using some of those fundings that were already appropriated. There would be nothing more that you would need to do other than because it was already, these funds were already appropriated, is for us to go ahead and move forward with continuing to spend those funds. And so that's relating to some added added resources when it comes to some of the kayaks, the pedal boats, expanding the use for the aluminum dock that we have there. It's narrow. It's not easy to access if you're getting on your kayak. There's there's some things there that are the pedal boats especially. This would expand on that use. And then adding for picnic tables because of the growth that we've had there, there's a lot of people that could use that added space for picnic tables, some of those being ADA. We are seeing a great use of that park with individuals that really need better access. And so there's been a lot done with that as far as the paved walkways, those things. But we could certainly enhance that. Adding some benches around the new playground. We have a great deal of parents that are there with their kids. And so expanding on the playground, the bench opportunities around the playground. And then we do have a lot of people that are using that space currently. We have, if you remember, you know, if you've gone to campsites, you see these small little barbecue sets that are that are available. We've had those in the past. Some of them have been really destroyed and old, replacing some of those because there is greater use for that. People are bringing in their coolers and using that as a great open space. So this has been a really successful program. Council Walker has really led this with the staff. And oh, I'm sorry, the last one is just adding because of more use, adding more trash containers, making sure we're keeping the place clean and those things and making it easy for people to access and use. So based on the numbers that we're seeing, staff will be really working at trying to coordinate with an outside vendor to have some regular use there. I think once the new parking lot is added that was approved in the CIP, that will be a great benefit. And I think we could find a vendor that that would want to use that. So that's the second initiative. And then the mayor already outlined the food insecurity component. And again, that's expanding on initiatives that we've already done.
Questions or comments from the council? Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Phil, can you back up back to the to the food insecurity and stuff? Because I want to find out more of a breakdown. Because when we had discussed funding, I was told originally $35,000 was going to go per Grab and Go. And then and talked with the mayor, he said I could possibly get more money through Harper. So it'd be a bigger dollar a month for the Grab and Go from the PAL Center. Then I find out that the $35,000 that we were supposed to be going towards that was put out to bid so that any other food pantry that wanted to get extra funds to help get food to give out to their patrons that come in, they could apply for the money. And so now where your guys are saying that $40,000 is allocated, is that going to be truly to the PAL Center for their Grab and Go grocery as well as their meal program?
So yeah, so just to clarify. So the total amount for food insecurity for the coming year is $70,000. And when we had our budget workshops, this the manager did not include that in his budget. And we discussed continuing that for another year. So the 70,000, $35,000 is coming from CBDG funds from an action that the council already took. In in this 40,000 for food insecurity, $35,000 of this is going towards in conjunction with the 35 from CDBG is going towards Grab and Go and the provision of food for the youth that's using the PAL Center. The RFP, as I understand it, and the and the manager can clarify this, the RFP is for the food delivery piece for the Grab and Go, which is what we discussed during the budget discussion is doing this for another year instead of having city staff doing it, ask for a vendor. That money, if to your point, Council Gary, if that if this if there was a bidder for that service that was an existing food pantry, this is not for them to take the money to supplement their food pantry operation. It's to fulfill the objectives of Grab and Go and not just to supplement their existing activity. And then the 5,000, the reason it's 40 is to round that out for the potato program. Does that does that clarify it about more?
So then exactly how much money is going to go for the PAL Center? So for their budget to feed the kids that come in or the parents as well as whatever? Because they do have, they had a food pantry and they need to be able to stock it and put stuff in there.
So this is this is a this is always a target that's always moving, right? It depends on how many kids we have, types of turnout. And then what we also do is we build off from what we're able to bring in. So if we're able to, it depends on what we're able to bring from Good Shepherd. And what we're able to bring in, we're able to say, well, let's take a portion of what we were able to bring in to make sure we're preparing either some Grab and Go boxes for the families of the kids that are at the PAL Center or we're actually making meals with those with those with some of that food. So it's been a blended initiative. And and I wish I could give you a hard number, but we we've we've just moved the PAL Center into the rec program. We're still not over to the rec facility. We're not even certain what our numbers are going to look like during this upcoming year that PAL Center is going to be under construction. But I think that the number that we're providing gives us a solid number to continue with the current individuals that are in the program for Grab and Go and still provide us with a pantry-like initiative for the kids within the PAL Center. We really try to ramp up on long weekends and so that there's some items that are being taken home with them and that's available. So that that's the initiative there.
So if I'm correct, if I'm understanding, and it's 70,000 is the number. 35 from CDBG, I think that's and 35 from ARPA plus 5,000 to the potato program.
And so it'd be 75 total, 35 from CDBG and 35 here from ARPA.
70 total plus 5,000 too. And that's going to be also through the PAL Center, the potato.
That's through the senior program. It's at the senior center. That's.
That's the senior center program.
Yeah, Council Walker helps initiate that and make that available.
So is that what you're looking for, Councilor?
Thank you. I just would like to have a hard numbers because the food that they get at the PAL Center for their Grab and Go, a lot of it, they try to get donations for so it doesn't fall on the back of the taxpayers. Where if they have to go to the Good Shepherd, they have to pay so much per pound or whatever to get the food. So there is a cost for it. Currently, the Grab and Go from the rec department, well, I mean, the PAL Center is over, I'll say, like 280 people or families and people, some of which are seniors, some of them are families with kids. And I just want to make sure that they've they're all took care of and not left to their own devices because a lot of them don't have the transportation. They're not running out to the other food pantries. I'm just trying to cover my bases.
And I think the city's allocating 70,000 towards that effort is what?
Yes and no. It's not going specifically to the PAL Center. If you if you wanted, if you're a nonprofit and you want to take on delivering food, then you put in a bid for part of that money in order to do it. So that divides that pot into smaller pots.
And I'm trying to understand, are you for that or against that? Or do you want to maintain that's I'm trying to understand what your ask is concretely.
I want to keep the current Grab and Go in with the funding that they need in order to do all their families and still be able to do their deliveries.
So so the intention of the $70,000 that we talked about is to continue the Grab and Go and providing the food for the youth that use the PAL Center. And I think the city manager has been clear, he can't at this point in time split that and say the exact number of this dollars are going to go to one or the other. But the intention is to continue those programs with this $70,000 through this year. How they actually do it, I we don't know even if we're going to get any bidders from the any nonprofits. And if we do, what what they would propose. But I think the city administration within the $70,000 will have to evaluate that and see if that's an efficient way to do it or not.
That's going to be the rec department, which has this, is going to evaluate the best use of that in regards with the Grab and Go. So it's about 70 grand that we're going to have towards that.
Yeah, we're confident that we're confident that the program we've been running will continue to run as we have in previous years.
Council Mike.
Thank you. Question, maybe Leroy can key into this with the potato program. Did this this number for 5,000, is it hasn't been decreased? I know that's a very popular program. I I've heard it previously in the past that it was 10,000 that's been allocated. Just one time? Okay. I know it's a very popular program. And maybe Leroy can speak to this. If there's an opportunity to possibly allocate an extra $5,000 during that year that was $10,000, did you see quite a need for that? And are you with the $5,000 we're giving now? Can you see if another 5,000, would that be spent? I mean, be taken, I mean, have popularity?
Well, when we had the 10,000, actually it went over 12,000, but we were given 10 to do it. We actually supplied a lot more places with potatoes this time with the 5,000 because we didn't have enough money to go to 10. So we went to 5,000. We've the price of potatoes did not go up. We still got them for, I believe, it's 30 cents a pound or whatever it come out to be. And we we pass them out only through the senior center at Peckingale Park. Anyone that wanted to come to get them, we tried to, as you know, I try to announce it during our monthly meetings. And and we've done well with that. We've we've given away pretty close to the $5,000 worth of potatoes just in that side alone.
I I think we have the right number, if that's what you're asking. I think that right now is the right number without a lot more legwork and initiative to try to do an outreach to other programs. I think we're doing what we need to for our age-friendly community.
Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I got used to executive session. In next year's budget, could we look at the feasibility to expand on the program that Council Walker has of potatoes and open it up to other vendors within the community? I mean, we might be able to get apples or some other things in order to help supplement some business as well as what we're doing to help Bell Farm.
Yeah, so I think that all of these initiatives that we're talking about here in food insecurity, there'll have to be a discussion amongst the council in next year's budget deliberations as to whether you want to add this into the budget or not because the ability to carry this forward on the ARPA money is going to end this year. And so we can have a discussion at that time about what what we want to do relative to the food insecurity items. Any other questions or comments from the council? So the these items will will come up on the July 1 agenda for appropriation of the ARPA money. If there's nothing further, we'll adjourn the work session and be in the regular city council meeting in city council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, Auburn City Council will be called to order. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the councillors introduce themselves, starting with Council Gary.
Sorry. Good evening. I'm Belinda Gary. I'm a city councillor at large.
Good evening. Rick Whiting, city councillor, Ward one.
Good evening. Tim Cowan, city councillor, Ward two.
Steve Milks, city councillor, Ward three.
Jeff Harmon, mayor.
Ben Weisner, city councillor, Ward four.
Leroy Walker, city councillor, Ward five.
Adam Platt, city council at large.
Phil Kroll, city manager.
Thank you. The first item is consent items. There are no consent items tonight. We'll move on to the second agenda item minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minute? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to move.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Walker and seconded by councillor Platts. Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? So the vote is six in favor, none opposed, one abstention. Council Wyssner's an abstention because he was not at the meeting last week. The motion is approved. The next item is communications, presentations and recognition. First item is school budget referendum certified official results from June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. And the clerk has provided the certified results on the school budget. Voting in favor was one thousand and eighty-seven, opposed five fifty-four, eleven ballots were blank, and the school budget was approved. The next item is the proclamation for the World Refugee, excuse me, World Refugee Day, twenty twenty-four. Whereas around the world, millions of people have been forced to flee their homes due to violence, persecution and natural disasters, resulting in the worst refugee crisis in history. And whereas Maine is recognized as a welcoming state and offers hope and safety to all, and whereas many uprooted people have found safe haven in Auburn, bringing with them determination and optimism to contribute to our cultural, economic and intellectual fabric. And whereas Auburn is home to businesses, schools, faith communities and civic organizations, supporting refugees and providing a sense of belonging. And whereas the wisdom, experience and courage of refugees enrich our city and state. And whereas Auburn recognizes and celebrates Juneteenth, Freedom Day on June nineteenth. And whereas the remarkable determination of refugees to build a brighter future after great adversity inspires us all and brings beautiful diversity to our community. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Harmon, mayor of the city of Auburn, do hereby proclaim June twentieth, twenty twenty-four as World Refugee Day in Auburn. We'll move on to the next agenda item. This is the first open session of the evening. Any members of the public that wish to address the council on city business that is not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close the open session and move on to unfinished business. The first item is Order eighty-two, zero-six, zero-three, twenty twenty-four, authorizing the city's general obligation bonds in the amount of sixteen million, five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars to finance the city's FY twenty-five capital improvement program. Is there a motion?
No move.
Seconded.
And seconded was councillor Walker, so it was moved by councillor Whiting, seconded by councillor Walker. There'll be a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Any member of the public that would like to address the council on the general obligation bonds for the FY twenty-five capital improvement program, please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion by the council? Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is more or less our point of information. When we were developing, I mean, when we were doing the bond vote for the new public safety building, we were told what the actual cost for the building was, and then how much it would cost after we paid off all the bonds and the payments and the whatnot. Given the fact, I know this is even a lower amount, what is the extra dollars that's gonna accumulate that we have to pay in access of this money in order to be flushed?
So if I understand the question, you want to know what the interest amount is on the bond. Mr. Manager?
I think Kelsey can pull that up for us.
I'm working on pulling it up. I wasn't fast enough. Sorry, hold on one moment. I can get you an exact number in just a minute, but it'll be just over three million dollars in accrued interest over the life of the bond.
And what was the interest rate for the bond?
That's factored in at three-point-five.
Three-point-five. Anything further? Any other discussion from the council? Seeing none, the vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Whiting?
Yes.
Councillor Cowan?
Yes.
Councillor Milks?
Yes.
Councillor Weisner?
Yes.
Councillor Walker?
Yes.
Councillor Platts?
Yes.
Councillor Gary?
No.
Six having voted in the affirmative, one in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to new business. The first item is Order eighty-six, zero-six, seventeen, twenty twenty-four, authorizing the city clerk to waive the sixty-dollar business license fee for the age-friendly community committees concessions at Festival Plaza on Wednesday evenings from June twenty-sixth through August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Gary and seconded by councillor Walker. Is there a discussion by the council? This is in conjunction with the community band, is that correct?
That's correct. We, we will work definitely with the person that conducts the band, which is Milt Simon, and we will only have certain items to sell.
Questions or discussion by the council? Seeing none, the vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to item eight, which is the second open session of the evening. Any members of the public that would like to address the council on city business that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the second open session and we'll move on to reports. For the mayor's report, I attended representing the city a number of events since the last meeting. One was the opening of Lydia Media at Great Falls Plaza. They, the publishers of L.A. Metro and Uncle Andy's Digest, they moved their business into a new facility and they're expanding it to be a full-service marketing firm. The city manager and I attended the Andwell Health Partners ribbon cutting. It was really, you know, they're renaming, so this is the former Andrus Goggin Home Health and Hospice, in recognition that they have expanded to serve all sixteen counties in the state and beyond, just the home health and hospice services. They have rebranded. The city manager, I would recognize, is on the board of Andwell Partners, has been involved in the activities of their rebranding. Councillor Walker and I attended the Auburn Adult Education graduation. They had a great ceremony, very well-deserved, takes a lot of courage and effort for people to participate in the program and graduate. I attended the Dr. Bernard Lauin portrait unveiling at the Bates Atrium in Lewiston. Robert, Robert Shetley, who's the portrait artist who does the Americans Who Tell the Truth story, unveiled a portrait of Dr. Lauin, which very well-attended. There was probably two-hundred-and-fifty people there. I would note that they, the full set of portraits is going to be moved into the Bates Atrium and will be on display this fall. It's a very interesting series, and I encourage people to take a look at it when it opens. And then the last item, the city manager and I attended the Home at Last Realty ribbon cutting. Michelle Goslin's opened a new business at two-twenty-nine Center Street, and we squeezed it in before the torrential thunderstorm the other day. That's all I have. Councillor Gary?
Nothing at this time, please. Thank you.
Councillor Whiting.
Just like to thank Auburn Police Department and Auburn Fire Department for an outstanding job under difficult circumstances this weekend.
Councillor Cowan.
I'll second that councillor Whiting's comment. And we have a, a meeting this Thursday, starting at six o'clock here in the community room, for anyone like to sit and listen. It's the ad hoc committee on homelessness, so.
Councillor Milks. Councillor Weisner?
Again, councillor Whiting's comment. Thank you to the fire and police for their work for the tragic event that happened in this city. I, I don't know if it's in the city manager's report, if he can give an update on what's going on with the L.A. Balloon Festival, because I was out this weekend at Queechee Vermont's Balloon Festival, participating with my hot air balloon. So I'd like to hear what's going on with that.
And you have to let us know, were you actually flying it?
Yes, I was. Yeah, with my, with my instructor, yes.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Councillor Walker.
Thank you. Don't forget, June twenty-sixth, we'll be down here at Festival Plaza with a small concession stand with the band, Milt Simon, and come down and join us.
Councillor Platt.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate the results of the, the election approving the school committee budget. It was good to see people come out. It passed, as you mentioned, roughly two to one, so take that for what it is. That's what the people said, and I'd just like to say congratulations to the team that put that together. So everyone in the school department who worked to put that budget together, it takes a lot of work, as council members all know, for the municipal budget, so congrats to them, and I'll get started for next year's budget now.
Representative Aggie?
I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I think Jim's gonna put on the screen a capital projects implementation schedule that our partners have been working with, city staff on. Really want to highlight four projects, capital infrastructure projects that we're working through currently. First one being the PAL Center. So if you go by the PAL Center location on Chestnut Street, you will see that the road is currently closed, and what was the former PAL Center was demoed today. So work is underway. We are gearing up for a groundbreaking ceremony, probably the second week of July, so more information to come on that. We're just trying to make sure we align all of our partners as we, as we work through that initiative. But you'll see here where the PAL construction phase is the highlighted in blue. I think Jim's almost got it up on the screen. I see his cursor moving. And you'll see that the current goal is that this facility will be completed by July, and hopefully we will be in this building and operational by August for the beginning of the new school year.
That, that hearing, the groundbreaking is July twelfth at eleven A.M.
Yes, yeah, maybe ten. So we're working through that. So we're working through that, maybe ten A.M. So yes, July twelfth, that's our target date. And also, I'm talking about July, move in August of twenty twenty-five. I should make sure I note that, that we're not doing this building in two months. So, so big project underway. Landry French, one of our partners for construction, is, is there. We've done things like taking apart the current refrigeration unit, so that'll be repurposed, and other equipment that's in this building has been secured. And our current programming is in some space at Hasty. It'll be an interesting summer. It's, we don't have that space. We're trying to make do, we're doing a lot of outdoor activities is the, the real initiative here. So hopefully weather helps us in that as we move forward. But obviously, real excited about this initiative and, and where that's moving. You'll see on this chart, on this chart, we also have, and working with the team, with Kelsey, talking about when, when is funding being allocated for these projects. And so you'll see down for Engine Two, we are in the design development phase on that currently, and then we will be moving into our construction documents. There's interviews that have been underway with contractors who bid on this project currently, and so that initiative is, is moving forward. So we will, by the, definitely by the first of the year, we'll be mobilizing the contractor, confirming the C.M. on this, and, and getting the construction underway for March of twenty twenty-six for the new Engine Two building. Just for those, as a reminder, current building will remain operational on the front end, and then the new, new construction will happen behind the current building. So that is moving along really well. The public safety facility, we have an ad hoc committee for the public safety facility. We, we visited Augusta P.D., which is only open like three weeks now, I think. We were there actually in their second week of operational. We were able to take a tour. The ad hoc committee, we were able to go down and take a tour of that facility. Was a great tour by the, by the Augusta Police Chief, walked us through the facility. Same contractors that we're currently using with the PAL Center. So it was nice, Landry French, so it was good to hear their relationship with Landry French, which is, was all positive, and just a great job that they were able to do on that facility. We are scheduling a tour of the Scarborough Public Safety Facility, so this will be a police and fire facility to really get a good handle of, of that shared use that we will be looking for in the new public safety building. So again, design, design development is taking us right into the end of this year. Then we'll be working towards permitting before planning, and then construction documents through a good portion of the half of the year in twenty twenty-five, and then. And then, and then we will begin some of that site work for that facility. This is a lot of site work. We have a residential home on this space, plus we have a fire training space that's in the back that will need to be removed, moved out of the way. So there's a lot of moving pieces when it comes to this project, but you'll see the timeline for this would be that the public safety building will be ready for move-in November of 2027. Key on this one is to take a look at the funding allocations. We will be working with our bond agent, talking about the best timing, how best do we bundle some of this? We're breaking this into, into some chunks like we have done in the past, especially with the school initiative. By doing that, there was a significant cost saving by breaking out the school and, and to different bond amounts. And so we will look to continue to do that in this project. And then the last one is the 67 Kitty Hawk Avenue. As, as you know, the council did appropriate for the purchase and sale of that building. We are currently still working through that purchase and sale agreement, so the attorneys are working that through. But you'll see a timeline for this as well, if that is to be completed and executed. This is what we're looking at for that facility. This ties into the public safety facility for the need for fire, fire services real, reallocated, or relocated rather, to, to 67 Kitty Hawk. And a lot of work will need to be done as far as education and changing our call areas for those app or fire apparatus, but the fire chief is working through that currently. But you'll see, that's, that's the timeline. Hopefully this is helpful. Like I said, we have, we have a lot of moving parts when it comes to these capital projects, a lot of staff involved in, in making sure that this is a successful initiative. Encourage you to take a look at, if you're on Union Street Bypass, that's probably the best way to see the building, or where the building used to be. You can look across the gully and be able to take a look at that project that's underway. That's it with the capital projects implementation schedule. The other piece I'd like to highlight is we do have a team that's monitoring some of the heat concerns that we're, we're looking at and the weather forecast for this upcoming week. We have stood-up cooling stations at the library in Norway Savings Bank Arena that will be open during regular business hours. If there's any, we'll also be monitoring whether or not, you know, it's the storms that come with this that we'll be monitoring. The mayor mentioned the storm this past week, that really we had a microburst that hit in the region of Auburn in the Hotel Manly Road area that caused significant damage and power outage for well over six hours, I believe it was, for many of the residents in that area. We'll continue watch, watching that. We'll have the team up and running. I appreciate Council Whiting and others that weighed in on the public emergency situation this weekend, and I would echo the same, not just our public, public safety staff, but also the other staff and surrounding partners with the state police and the Sheriff's Department, Red Cross, and others that helped make sure we're meeting the needs for, for our residents because of that, that incident. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor?
Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I ask their city manager a question? Thank you. Given the heat that's coming up in the next few days, has there been any plans made for any form of cooling centers or things to prepare for anybody that needs to have a place to go to?
So Norway Savings Bank Arena and the library will be available during business hours. The Norway Savings Bank Arena, I believe it's, it's 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., so I think that has a really good coverage for us, for, for folks to be able to access.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. That's right. Council Weisner, thank you, Mayor. Council Weisner did ask about balloon festival. Staff is meeting regularly with the City of Lewiston to work out details of that initiative. The, probably the biggest announcement right now is the collaboration between two former mayors, Mayor Care and Mayor Levesque, to assist in raising funds to help with this initiative, so that is underway. The, as far as vendors, they're working through continuing to secure vendors and other resources. And there's a lot of moving, moving parts with this, but our point person is our communications director, Liz Allen. She's, she's attending those meetings regularly and continuing to provide what we can in, in trying to identify exactly what will take place here on the Auburn side of the river. We do see, the parking garage is filled, full during the balloon festival. A lot of people will park here in the parking garage, walk the river, walk. Many will stay on this side, some will travel across. But right now, that, that Saturday is still gearing up for the parade that will start around Academy Street, come down Main Street, go across the bridge, over to Smart Pain Park. And then there's still efforts that are being done to look at a car show on Main Street as well as a beer garden and a food vendor in Festival Plaza. And, and there are some initiatives that are underway regarding some, some kayak tours along the river. And so some of that's happening actually on this side of the river. Actually, I think that'll be on both sides, actually. So, so that's underway as well. So that's, that's what I have for an update for now.
That's the weekend of the 17th, August 17th and 18th, I think?
I think it's 16, 17, 18.
16, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that starts that Friday night.
Ms. Earl?
Thank you, Mayor. Council. There are no significant variances that would be cause for concern in the May report. I would like to point something out that Council Cowan, thank you for reading my report, pointed out, which will be adjusted when I post the copy of the report onto our financial page, which is on page 35 in the discussion of the Ingersoll expenditures. There was an error in wording there. The reduction resulted from costs now being budgeted in the recreation department lines, and that is what it will be changed to say as it should have in the first place. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Any questions by the council about the financial report?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Moved by Council Walker, seconded by Councilor Milks to accept the report. Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative, none in the negative. The report is accepted. I would note, for the public, there will be a special city council meeting next Monday, the 24th. It'll be a workshop starting at 5:30 p.m. There'll be two agenda items, one dealing with the subsurface wastewater disposal systems, the septic systems in the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district, and the second one relative to homeless services. We'll move on to an executive session. There is no anticipated action by the council after the executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Council Cowan, seconded by Council Walker to move into executive session. The vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative. The council will be in executive session.